Good evening and welcome to the January 27th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, delivery and justice for all.
Kirk, would you please take the role?
Capuda.
Here.
Shildroth.
Here.
Stenett.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gribb.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Seeing we have a quorum, I call this meeting order. Everybody in attendance tonight, would you please, if you have a cellphone, would you please turn it off or put it on vibrate? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from our regular meeting and executive meeting of January 14th, 13th. Thank you. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Mr. Schmidt moves for approval. Say goodbye, Ms. Pagano. All those in favor? Aye. I'm gonna make another announcement real quick here. If anyone would like to speak tonight from hearing from citizens, there is a box on the table right at the entrance to the chamber with a card. Would you please fill that card out and put it in the box before you speak tonight, and you will be allowed three minutes to speak. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a special presentation, the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System. Mr. Barrett?
Good evening, Council. I'd like to introduce Mr. Dale Schmutzler with State Emergency Management. The city of Florissant, actually prior to me taking the office that I have right now, had initiated the enrollment into the Community Rating System program. It's a system that Mr. Schmutzler will talk a little bit more about in a minute, but it rewards a community for their floodplain management and offers discounts to homeowners and businesses within the city that have flood insurance policies. So I'll let Mr. Schmutzler talk and go from there.
Thank you. Well, good evening. I'm Dale Schmutzler. I'm with the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency where I'm the state coordinator for the National Flood Insurance Program. City Florissant has been participating in a national flood insurance program since February 1981, and it's been able to make flood insurance available for the citizens and property owners here in Florissant. Since entering the flood insurance program, the city's efforts and administration and enforcement of the program have resulted in a safer and more disaster-resistant community. Back in the early 70s, excuse me, the early 90s, FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, decided to recognize communities for exceptional efforts by reducing flood insurance premiums through the Community Rating System, or CRS. CRS developed a list of activities related to floodplain management activities and established a credit-based point system. Communities receiving a 5% discount for each class advanced from 10, which is no discount, to a Class 1, which is up to a 45% discount. These discounts provide an incentive for flood protection, preparedness, and mitigation activities that help save lives and protect property in the event of a flood. Policyholders in the city of Florissant began receiving discounts on October 1, 2013. On October 1, 2013, Florissant was awarded a CRS Class 8 rating. Based on the recent information from FEMA, there are 246 flood insurance policies in Florissant and Florissant. Policyholders in the special flood hazard area, that's the A zones, can now receive a 10% discount on their premium policies. And also, some in the lower-risk zones like B, C, and X are eligible for a 10% discount also. Based on the information from FEMA, policyholders should realize an annual savings here, that's for the folks here in Florissant, annual savings of $32,115 because Florissant made the effort to participate in the Community Rating System. As I said, there's a point system. CRS program is implemented and receives credits for activities related to elevation certificates for structures, providing map information services, conducting education and outreach, providing flood hazard disclosure, providing flood protection information and resources in local libraries, documenting open space preservation, implementation of higher regulatory standards, maintaining flood data, stormwater management, floodplain management, and drainage system maintenance. I'm here today on behalf of SEMA, the staff from, there wasn't any staff from FEMA available, and they just asked that I meet with the council. I want to recognize the city for their outstanding efforts in floodplain management. I want to thank Tim Barrett and the Department of Public Work Staff for their dedication and contributions. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, I have a plaque I'd like to present to you.
Thank you very much.
Flood Insurance Program, and Florissant is, I believe, about 1 of 8 in Missouri that participate, so.
Thank you.
What you may not know is that I actually had Mr. Barrett's job at one time. Mary Egan hired me in 1976, and for two years there, I was the one that was working with FEMA on the flood insurance, floodplain zone and the mapping and so forth. And I can remember that that would change like every year. It seemed like they had a little bit adjustments to the map, and we'd have to go in and do maps, and people would be challenging as to whether they were in the floodplain or wasn't in the floodplain. So I know it's a constantly changing dynamic, and it's kind of complex, but thank you for everything that you do. Thanks.
And, Mr. Barrett, thank you for your expertise. Do you have anything to say?
Just along the lines of what Mr. Schmutzler said, about 1 of 8 in the state of Missouri, and in St. Louis County, I think it is just Florissant and Maryland Heights as of right now. They came in as well. St. Charles County is, but I think in the St. Charles County area, we're Class 8. I don't know if there's anyone in the area, except maybe St. Charles, that's a higher class than that. So it took a few years, actually, to get in, and it's just, it's nice to see it pay off. And I was dealing with a resident today who was gonna be saving, I think, $144 every year, so that is making a difference already. So that's all I'd like to say.
Well, this is a very attractive plaque. Appreciate it very much. Tim, why don't you take this from me, and we'll talk tomorrow about an appropriate place to put it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Almost 40 years, that's a lot of...
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Schmutzler. Next on the agenda, we have a special presentation from Christian Hospital Community Health Access Program.
Well, hello, everyone. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and chat with you. Let me go ahead and get this program going. I didn't want to stand up here too long. My name is Chris Subalero. I'm the chief of EMS at Christian Hospital, and I've been there just about four years. And I've been a paramedic for about, a long time, almost 30 years. I'm getting old. That's what it is, I'm getting old. So, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to come and visit with you guys, and we gave a presentation last week. Mr. Lee thought it would be great to come and share the program that we have with you, and I'm excited to bring it to you, if I could pick which one it is. So, we're gonna talk about the Community Health Access Program. And I'm pretty loud when I speak. Do I need to use the microphone? Is that gonna be helpful for the folks at home? All right. Let me do that. All right, so we're gonna talk about the Community Health Access Program. One of the things that we wanted to look at is, we wanted to look at how were we taking care of our patients? And one of the things that we came to the realization of is, maybe we weren't doing the best job that we could do. And that's really kind of difficult to admit, but we kind of moved into that process based on the new environment that we're in. Now, I will tell you this before we start. The program that we're putting on is so innovative, there are folks that are doing it in the EMS side, there are folks that are doing it on the hospital side, but we're kind of doing it for the first time integrated, which is where a lot of the EMS systems want to go. As a matter of fact, we have a documentary crew who's following us around that's keeping track of our development and implementation of this program. So right now, in this little corner of the United States, we are setting the standards for others to follow, which is really kind of exciting. So we're gonna talk about the Community Health Access Program. And I always like to start off my presentations with a little bit of a quote, and this one comes from FDR, "And there are many ways of going forward, but there's only one way of standing still." And I think for years, when we think about healthcare, we really kind of were stagnant, and we were just kind of doing what we thought we needed to do as we went forward, but now that's not gonna be good enough. So we all know that in March of 2010, the Affordable Care Act became law. And regardless of what side of the politics you're on, this really comes down to being what's best for the sick guy, and that's what we want to look at. So it really caused us to look at our processes, and it challenged us to do a couple things. First off, the delivery of care. Was the delivery care that we were giving to our community adequate? The next thing we had to look at was the community needs. Were we meeting the needs of our community? And then finally, were they attaining the resources that they needed to be healthy? And I gotta tell you, when we sat around the table, a lot of times the answers came back no. And as a community hospital, for us to say, maybe we need to do things a little bit differently, that was a very, very big step. So if we look at some of the things we weren't doing very well, we weren't meeting the patient's needs for taking care of chronic conditions, and I'm gonna outline all this for you. There was a lack of attention in promoting health. You know, we were talking, folks were coming into the ER, they were having their episodes, whatever they were, we were putting the Band-Aid on those things, and then we were sending them home. But what was really keeping them from coming back after that point? Also, another one I think is really important is the lack of ongoing medical support. As a paramedic, it's my job to ensure that I'm there for people when they need us. I'd go to your home and I'd take care of your asthma. You're having trouble breathing, so I'd give you some medicine, I'd open up your lungs. I'd take you to the doctor, to the hospital, to the ER. Maybe they give you a shot, and it keeps your lungs open the rest of the day. But what happens in the next couple days, when the asthma comes back because of the cold weather? And who's taking care of that? Nothing. You're gonna call 911, I'm gonna come out and visit you, we're gonna do the same process over again. And this is really where we weren't doing the best job possible for our community. So if we look at EMS transports alone, we run about 30,000 911 calls up in our area, and we transport about 22,400 of those. And you can see, from the smaller piece of the pie, about 9,000 of those calls are truly non-emergency. So when we think about emergencies, we think about cardiac arrests and respiratory arrests and seizures and allergic reactions. These are people that we would take to the hospital that would have arm pain, or that would have a tooth pain, and they were using EMS as a ride to the hospital, and then the ER for primary care. But let's go ahead and look at that a little bit more. When we think about Christian Hospital, and we think about Christian Northwest, we're the largest emergency room in the state. We treat about 116,000 patients a year, and you could see from the chart, about 47% or 55,000 individuals had non-emergencies. And these are the populations that we were really failing. The reason that we're failing them is, they're coming in, we're putting the Band-Aid on, we're sending them home, and then they're just coming back. Nobody's following up on their care, no one's giving them the education they need to manage their care, and it just precipitates that problem, and it just keeps going on and on. So what we needed to do is, we needed to really sit down and say, how do we ensure that we take care of these patients? You know, when I was in the military, I was in the Air Force for 12 years, we had the saying of, we never left our wingman behind. It was the Air Force, you know, so the wingman. We never left our wingman behind. We always made sure we took care of him. Well, we all remember the program of no child left behind, so we want to take this a little bit further in our community and say, no patient left behind. And what we need to ensure now is we get the resources that we need for our patients, that they can live healthier lives. So if we think about it again, what are we gonna do for this 55,000 that just keep coming back and nobody is managing their care? And that's where our failure was, and that's what we wanted to try to address. The Institute for Healthcare Improvement has Triple Aim. And basically what this is, is this is some objectives that say for healthcare, we want to make sure that they meet a couple things. First off is, we need to improve the individual care, patient's experience. Now, you've been there like I have. We call a doctor, it maybe takes us 10 days or two weeks to see our primary care physician. Then we sit out there in the waiting room, we go through all those magazines, then we finally get the call, then we go back and we sit in another waiting room for a little bit longer. And then the doctor comes in and he spends maybe 10 minutes with us. And he says, what's the problem? This is what's going on. Here's some medicine, go ahead and have a great day. If it doesn't relieve, give me a call back in, in another five days. But really, we're spending more time in the waiting room than we were with the doctor as far as educating about our conditions, and giving us the information we need, or what does these medications do? There are some people that we're seeing now that are taking medications that they have no idea why they're taking them, or what that purpose of why they're taking those medications. Another one is to improve the health of the populations. Part of the charge of the Affordable Care Act is that we build a healthier community. Well, whose responsibility is it to do that? Well, as a community hospital, we feel that it's our responsibility, and that's why we're kind of stepping up with this program. And of course, anytime you think about any innovation, it's always about cost. How do you reduce the cost of what the insurance companies are paying, of what the people are coming out of their pockets for? Again, those are really important. Do you need to have, you know, $3,700 MRI bills where they're doing $600 bills down the road? So there needs to be some collaboration there that'll say, we need to bring some prices in line. So with the Triple Aim in mind, we wanted to make sure that we got the right resource at the right time to the right patient, of course, with the right outcome. It's not just, here you go, here's your prescription, call us if you need us, but what are we gonna do for the best outcome we can, and of course, at the right cost? So we identified some challenges. How do we get the appropriate healthcare to the citizens that we serve? How do we ensure that we get the community signed up for that medical funding? When we think about the Affordable Care Act, the demographics in North County, this is who this program was developed for. And now, there are folks that don't know how to go about getting this insurance. You know, the thing that amazed me is, as I'm going through and talking about this program, there are senior citizens 65 years old that can sign up for Medicare that don't even sign up for Medicare because they don't know how. And that's kind of amazing. Again, but whose responsibility is it to get them hooked up with this process? When we think about the demographics here in North County, is there somebody that's gonna be able to help them wade through the computer and all that stuff they have to do to get the medical funding? Well, the answer's no. So again, that's where we want to be able to help, become a resource to our community to say, let us help you get signed up for this funding. And then as well, how do we create a healthier community? These are all great questions. So what we did is, we put a group together with a whole different bunch of expertise and experience, led by our vice president of Patient Care Service and chief nurse executive, Jennifer Cordia. Her name's up there somewhere, right there. And the folks that you see up there really have a lot of years of experience in their different specialties. You know, we have our process improvement people, we have our state regulatory commissions, we have BJC's corporate lawyers involved in this. We have Randy Graham who spent, you know, 1,000 years in the ER world, Dr. Brian Ullery who is now the chief of EMS at Northeast and Northwest, Annette McCauley who works as the director of those patient care services as well. So what we did is, we sat down and we say, now what do we do with all our experience and what do we figure out, how do we help our community? This is what we came up with. We came up with our plan. And our plan is called the Community Health Access Program. So I wanted to give you a little bit of how we got here, now we go into a little bit of what this is gonna do for our community. So first off, we're gonna use community paramedics, and advanced, we're calling them advanced practice paramedics, to kind of do more primary care in the community. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. We developed two health resource centers. One is gonna be at Northwest Healthcare, one is gonna be at Northeast. And the opening of our program is February 3 on Monday, and we're going through now all the painstaking, final preparations to make sure we're ready to go. But you know, there's always things that we're gonna forget. Now, these health resource centers have a couple different things in them. We don't like to say the word clinic. This isn't a clinic, but there is a medical component. But this is where the resources will be to hook those patients up with the resources of the community. You know, when we talk about the United Way, or we talk about the American Red Cross, or when we talk about Meals on Wheels, or shelters, I didn't even know some of the resources that these agencies had, that they could be helpful to our community. And our community doesn't know, but again, we want to be able to have someone in our health resource center that can plug those people in to those resources that they need. There's gonna be a clinic component as well, as well as the opportunity to get those folks signed up for that medical funding. We had to identify our community partners, and we've been talking to so many people. We've been talking to, again, the United Way, American Red Cross, we went and met with Planned Parenthood, and just, what are the resources that are in the community that they can help our patients with? And very important, we need to identify our patients through 911 and ED visits, and that was that 55,000 we talked about, is how do we help them so they're not reoccurring in that episodic care of coming back into the ER, and let's get them on a healthier course so they don't need the ER, and they don't need the ambulance to take care of these minor problems? So we need to get them hooked up with those resources. We need to provide guidance to get them to those resources, wherever they were. And then the next thing is, to follow up with them. Let's get them on the phone. It's not gonna hurt to call them the next day and say, how did your appointment go? Did everything work well? Do you have any questions? You know, when you guys leave, I don't know if you ever had a hospital stay, but you get those discharge instructions, right? And they tell you, here's your medicine, blah, 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 follow-up. Are we really paying attention to that? We're thinking about, what are we gonna make for dinner? And I gotta pick the kid up, and my husband is, my wife is gonna... And we're not listening to those things, but you gotta understand, when these people go home, they don't know what to do next. And then they're falling back into the same routine, which is gonna get them back into the hospital. If we just pick up the phone the next day, or as our paramedics are driving around in the city, stop by their homes and see if they have any questions. Let's take their blood pressures, and let's just let them know we're there for them. That's what we wanted to look at. So how do we accomplish this? I want to go ahead and share with you, I shouldn't have done this soon, so let me stop this real quick. So, the program that we're talking about, advanced practice paramedics are putting paramedics into the community, is not a new idea. And this is gonna really be more towards that primary care side, and I was involved in a pilot program in Fort Worth, Texas about five years ago. And now they've got five years' worth of data that they've been using. So NBC News did a story on the Minnesota program. There's about 276 programs now in the United States, and this is what it is, so I'm gonna kind of give you an overview of what NBC News had to say.
With millions of people focused on healthcare and the government's new insurance program, we want to tell you tonight about a novel approach to bringing medical costs down. It involves a variation on what used to be a common practice in this country, the house call. Our report tonight from NBC's chief medical editor, Dr. Nancy Snyderman.
Visits to the emergency room are skyrocketing, about 130 million a year.
I'm just gonna take a listen to you too, okay? Anybody can be seen, and so I think in our country now, a big thing is that the emergency departments is a safety net for people who don't have insurance.
It's a tremendous burden on hospitals struggling to keep costs down.
81-year-old lady who was here with shortness of breath.
That's why Minnesota's North Memorial Healthcare System is among the first in the country to test a new approach they think might reduce admissions and keep people healthier. They're sending paramedics on house calls to patients with chronic conditions like diabetes and asthma who might otherwise go to the ER.
It's when you get to spend more time with them, you get to find out what's going on, what's truly bothering them, and what they need the most help with. How are you doing today?
Chris Anderson is among the first group of paramedics specially trained to make the house calls. He regularly checks in on patients like Victoria Dembleiker, helping her with her medications and blood tests, things she used to visit the emergency room for.
You're in better shape than I am.
The project started last October after hospital officials referred people who used the emergency room nine or more times in a year.
There's so many patients.
North Memorial's chief medical officer, Dr. Kevin Croston, says the number of repeat patients is often staggering.
We've had some patients that are here 23 times in a month.
Since then, community paramedics have made more than 1,000 home visits at a fraction of the cost for a trip to the ER. Barb Andrews runs the program.
It gives us as paramedics an opportunity to be proactive rather than reactive.
And says it's a new way of thinking about the role of first responders in caring for patients.
I'll see you next week then.
Empower them to be able to manage their own health better in the home, keep them out of the nursing home, keep them out of the hospital.
North Memorial doesn't have data on the cost savings yet, but believes this program will reduce admissions and give better care to the chronically ill, and that's better for everyone in the long run. Dr. Nancy Snyderman, NBC News, New York.
So again, the house call isn't new. It was there when we were growing up, and now it's time to bring that back. And you know, we're in the field, and we're seeing the patients that are coming into the facility. And again, it's my job to ensure that we're there on the cardiac... What could be the worst day of your life? The cardiac arrest, the car accidents, the asthma, the anaphylaxis, your allergic reactions. But who's helping, who's helping keeping that from happening? And that's where we want to be able to be proactive in that process. We want to be able to get the patients to the resources that they need so they can live a better quality of life. Because you have some folks, and we talk about just from August to the end of the year, 22 patients have come to the hospital 660 times. And that's not a way to live. But again, whose responsibility was it to get them hooked up with the proper resources and get them the healthcare they need? We need to take responsibility in that, and that's what we're gonna do. So our expanded role for our paramedics, we do primary care, we do emerg... These are things that we do. So we want to be able to change what we're doing as far as emergency medical services, and now we want to call it mobile integrated healthcare. It's important that we integrate with our hospital partners, and we ensure that we get our patients hooked up with the right resources that they need so they don't have to keep coming back for that medical attention that they're not getting. And there are some EMS agencies in the United States that are changing their name from emergency medical services to now calling themselves mobile healthcare, just because this is now the future of where EMS is gonna be going. In the next three to five years, the component or the landscape of EMS, this is what it's gonna look like. Now, the reason that I can say that to you as well is, I happen to hold two board positions in national organizations for EMS, and this is where the wind is blowing nationally. So if we think about our advanced practice paramedics, they have clinical expertise. We've given them more training than they would have gotten through their, pardon me, through their regular training. So we started off by giving them a critical care certification. Then they're getting in upwards of 250 extra hours of additional training. Every time we identify something, we go to the resources in our facility to say, how can you help us and help our paramedics gain this knowledge? You know, we deal with death and dying, or we deal with stress management, or those types of things we're giving our folks. But if we think about some of the things that we could do in the home, these are some of the things that we can look at. You know, we have physicians' offices that are calling us to say, hey, look, if I give this patient stitches, can you go back in six or seven days and take them out? Well, of course we can. And now we're saving a visit to the, we're saving that visit to the doctor's office, we're saving the visit back to the hospital, and we're able to do these things. And that's where we're gonna see, you know, one of the things I think is amazing is, the New England Journal of Medicine is telling us by the year 2025, there's gonna be a shortage of primary care physicians by 214,000. Who's gonna pick up this slack and take care of our community? And now, as we get those baby boomers that are starting to retire, we need to start thinking about who's gonna step up and do that. And I've got an answer for you, and it's our advanced practice paramedics. Let me talk to you, there's only about a few more slides left to go, folks. So let me talk to you about our 911 process, because everybody's like, how many slides does this guy have? Actually, I was told I could go for as long as I want, right? Didn't you say, all right? Okay. Oh, thank you very much, sir. So let me explain to you how the 911 call comes in. You guys probably know, I've been a great EMS assistant here in Florissant, is that the call comes in and they get, you know, they ask, what's going on? What's your emergency? You say, you know, I banged my arm as I was walking into the living room, into the kitchen, and I think I might have broke my arm. And then I'll always ask you the question, well, did you get short of breath? Well, you know what? As a matter of fact, I did get short of breath. Now we're responding to a respiratory distress call instead of responding to an arm pain call. Well, now what we want to do, and with our partners at Central County Dispatch, we're gonna start to go deeper into that protocol. And if it seems like it's a true medical emergency, or a non-medical emergency, we're gonna send an ambulance, of course, but we're also gonna send an advanced practice paramedic as well. The... The advanced practice paramedic is going to do a full medical screen, they're going to make sure that there's not a life threat or a potential life threat, and if that's the case, they're going to put the ambulance back into service. And we're going to deal with the patient right there. So what we're going to do is a couple things. Here you are as the patient, we're either going to treat you at home, because we can do that. We weren't just allowed to do that in the past. It was always, put them on the cot, put them on the seatbelt, put them in the ambulance, take them to the emergency room, but there were things that we could fix right there. Well, now we're going to have the latitude that we can do that. We're going to work with their primary care physician to say, "Let's get you an appointment to the doc." Now, you and I both know, when we pick up the phone and call our doctor and say, "I need to get in," it's like, what, 10 days? Seven days? But the emergency that these people are calling, that they want to be addressed right away. So we've been getting around to these primary care physicians in our area to say, "If we call you, will you give us the courtesy of getting your people in the same day?" And you know what they're telling us? Yes, we'll do that. But that's what's, instead of these folks who are now going to the ER, they're going to get them in their office if they can. But what about the folks that don't have primary care physicians? You know, we're talking to some of these primary care docs, and there's a primary care doc that doesn't have a primary care physician. We're not going to take care of him. But anyway, so Dr. Chris Perry, who works at Northeast, has said, "Look, if people don't have primary care physician, have them come see me." Oh, by the way, these can be people with little or no insurance, which I think is amazing. The other thing that we'll do is we'll get them an appointment at the Health Resource Center. So if they don't have a medical emergency, but it's still important to them, we want them to be seen. So we're going to get them into the Health Resource Center. Our Health Resource Center is going to be open from 11:00 A. to 11:00 P., seven days a week. So if we go to your home, and it's 5:00 in the afternoon, we're going to get you an appointment at that Health Resource Center. "Oh, wait a minute, you can't get there? Here's a couple cab vouchers." Let's go ahead and, here's a cab voucher, we'll call the cab, we'll get you, we'll get you a cab here, and we'll get you care back. One of the things that's heartbreaking to me, as a paramedic with almost 30 years, is there are people that need to go to the hospital that won't go because they have no way to get home. And those things are challenging. It's easier for us to buy a courtesy van and go pick these people up and bring them to their medical appointments for them not to go, and then just precipitate the problem constantly. Again, whose responsibility is it? And somebody has to step up. So our emergency departments are going to have the same type of process. They're going to come in through registration through the ED. Then they're going to be triaged, life threat, potential life threat, where are we at with medical emergency? Then they're going to be given a full medical screen. Again, they're going to be given a physical to make sure that they're okay. They're going to check their blood pressure, they're going to look at their heart, those types of things. And then they'll determine if a medical emergency exists. If a medical emergency exists, we're going to head and send them in the ER. Now, the slide is not here, I keep doing this, I got to remember this slide comes up. So we talked about the training, the advanced training that the paramedics were getting. Well, we have a core group of nurses that have gotten some advanced triage training as well. We had a national agency come in and train about 70 of our folks, our hospital folks, on our triage process to say, "How do we help these folks, and what are the things that we need to look for?" But the same type of process there now in the ER. The patient, if they have a medical emergency, life threat or potential life threat, we're going to see them in the ER. If they don't have a life threat, we could send them over to the Health Resource Center, which is right across the way. If they have a PCP and they don't want to go to the Health Resource Center, we're going to get on the phone right there and call the PCP and say, "Mr. Jones is here, he's having some challenges, can we get him in to see you today?" Well, as a matter of fact, yes you can, or no. We won't be able to see him for two days, is that okay? "Well, Mr. Jones, is that okay? We can get you over to the Health Resource Center right now and get this taken care of for you." And if they don't have, we, again, we could hook them up with Dr. Perry. So when we think about how we're going to go move forward, again, the innovative idea of merging the EMS and making it more integrated with the hospital is that innovative piece that we're trying to accomplish. But the end of the day is, how do we create a healthier community? How do we give them the resources they need to be successful? And how can they live a better quality of life without having to go to the ER? You know, one patient went to the ER in a six-month period 40 times, and that's just not good for them. So, in a nutshell, that's our program, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and chat with you about it, and I'm more than happy to take some of your questions if you have any.
Mr. Lee?
Chris, obviously you're very excited about this, and the second time I've heard the presentation, but you know, I want to thank Christian and everybody for getting involved in this, and I'm going to ask a question. I know that there's going to be savings in the fact that there won't be people using the EMS on the emergency room, but where's the initial funding for this coming from?
Yeah, it's an excellent question, sir. And right now, there is no funding. There is no funding for this. And if we think about that 55,000 folks that we talk about, it, you know, there's a cost of about $600 per person as they come to the ER, regardless of they can pay or not, that's what it's going to cost. And, but if we can take some of those subset of folks and now see them in their home at a fraction of that cost, we're still not making any money, but we're not going to be losing as much money as we were. But again, we're not meeting the needs of the folks who are coming into the ER just by putting a Band-Aid on their problem, or here's a prescription, two or three until you get to see your doc. Now it gives us the opportunity to follow up with them. So what we hope to do is, and there's a lot of data that's going on, there's a lot of insurance companies that are looking at this process. What our goal is, and we were just talking about this today, is we want to gather enough data that we can go to our payers and say, and the insurance companies, and say, "Look at what we've done over an 18-month period and how much we've saved." Now what we would like is, we would like part of that cost savings and help us fund this. Or we could just go back to seeing all these people in the ER and taking them by ambulance, and we'll send you those bills instead. Now, what some of my peer agencies in the United States are seeing is the payers are finally saying, "We may need to help pay for this." They're going to wait as long as they can, but that day is going to come.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, now, in Minnesota, how this, this program is working now, does any of the insurance cover any of this?
Right now, no. But because it's now a state law in Minnesota, the insurance companies are having to look at it closer to say, "We may have to start paying for this." Now, I will tell you this, and this kind of segues. Last year, we were able, in one year, to pass a bill that recognizes community paramedics in a state. So we're halfway there. The state now, and we're working very closely with the state to develop those education standards and the definitions of how they could use, so once we get that stuff worked out, we're even closer to go to our payers to say, "Now we need your help." But again, they're going to hang on to that as long as they can, until they see some real hard data that shows what those cost savings are. So that's kind of where we are.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to compliment the emergency room at Christian Northwest. I received excellent care there last November when I had a, an emergency that wasn't, it was fairly common, but it was very painful. And I received excellent care, and just want to compliment your facility for doing an outstanding job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See no else? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'll get all this stuff out of your way.
Next on the agenda, we have hearing from citizens, and I don't think there's any cards been filled out. So I'll go to communications.
Email dated January 16th, 2014, from Jeff Cook, regarding Plaza Madrid.
Doing a little research with Mr. Hessel and the mayor and some other folks, I think this is the first time, probably in over 30 years, maybe longer, that we've had two presentations on the agenda, nothing else. It's kind of a rare happening in the city of Florissant. Next meeting, we will load up with, I think, at least four public hearings or more. And the cancellation of a PNZ meeting because of snow last month kind of helped the cause or made this possible, so it's just a rare occurrence that there is nothing on the agenda tonight. But I will go through the rest of the agenda. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings, there are none. After that, we have old business, second readings, there are none. On the agenda after that, we have new business. Do we have any board appointments? I do have one board appointment. I would like to appoint Mr. Rich Ribory, 8 Elm Drive, to the Disability and Awareness Commission. Mr. Egan moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Stenit. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make the following appointments. To the Emergency Management Commission, Allen Kennedy, 960 Cosco. Mary Janus, 1135 St. Regis. And Hubert, Robert Hughes, at 525 Allen.
A move for approval on all three? Seconded by Mr. Caputa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the reappointment to the Environmental Quality Commission, Doris Coleman, at 1380 Zurich. And Jeffrey Soynet, of 375 Versailles.
Mr. Egan moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Gribb, all those in favor?
Aye.
On Emergency Management Commission, Robert Shoemaker, 1440 Thoroughbred. And Patrick Brady, 3 St. George.
Mr. Hernandez moves for approval, seconded by Ms. Pagano, all those in favor?
Aye.
Disability Awareness Commission, Steve Schnell, at 1465 Vesper. And Gene Nochemper, at 545 Versailles.
Mr. Lee moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Gribb, all those in favor?
Aye.
To Veterans Commission, Denny Kopp, from 12 Lila Lane.
A move for approval, seconded by Ms. Pagano, all those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, to the Industrial Development Commission, John Hutchins, at 3173 Charbonneere.
A move for approval, seconded by Mr. Caputa, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have council announcements. Mr. Egan?
Thank you. Again, I'll reiterate, Polar Air Plunge, February 28th, I'm going to jump into the lake. If you want to tell me to jump in the lake, give me five bucks, and I'll be happy to do so. And probably be lined up around the block to tell me to jump in the lake. Number two, remember, March 29th, 2014, is the Explorer Tour night at JFK. It's $160 per table. That includes beer, wine, setups, snacks. Very affordable and fun evening for a great cause for $20 a person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. We did get a ruling, former police chiefs are allowed in the Polar Plunge, right? Thank you. Mr. Stenit?
This coming Sunday, February 1st, Old Town Partners will have their annual pancake breakfast at the Wedding Chapel.
February 2nd?
February 2nd, excuse me, thank you. Thank you. The breakfast will be from 8:00 to noon at the Wedding Chapel on St. Francois Street. I expect everyone to be there. Your favorite councilman is going to be the chief cook, so everything will be delivered or prepared to your taste. Look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Stenit. Mr. Lee?
Hey, Mr. Egan, I got $5 for you to jump in the lake, remind me later, so, yeah, I just wanted to, to announce that we're going to do something a little different. Wards 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 will be having a open house meet and greet on Saturday, March 1st, at JFK. So you can watch your mail for more, more information, but Mr. Egan is going to be grilling up some hot dogs, and we're going to have some light refreshments. So mark your calendars and come on up and just, we're going to be there from 3:00 till about 5:30. Just come on up and talk to us, let us know what's on your mind. We're not going to have any kind of a formal meeting, it's just a chance to get together. So the other wards did this in the summer, and it was 100 degrees, I think, that day, so we're going to be inside with, with, with heat, so we won't, shouldn't have the problems. But look forward to seeing everybody then.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, I just want to let everyone know that the Barnes &amp; Noble in Crosskey's, it is closing. It was a corporate decision. I know I've received many phone calls and some emails, and there's a lot of groups to the church and library and clubs that are disappointed that this has occurred. The city worked and talked, spoke with them, but there was nothing we could do, and I know too much dismay, I'm disappointed, my family and many others. So they closed February 28th, that'd be the last day that they'll be open, but it was something that was just not within our control, but just want everybody to know that it's going to be missed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I would like to congratulate Regina Jasper, 849 St. Marie in Ward 5, for the recent winner, winner of first place at Old Town Partners Deck the Doors competition. She had a really nice entry. I would also like to congratulate Maryland Heights Lieutenant and Ward 3 Councilman Joe Egan for being recognized for his work at the Guns and Hoses event, and a function that was last Thursday down at River City Casino. Congratulations, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pleased to congratulate Sergeant Michael Layton, who announced his retirement last week. And he is retiring from the department after many years of service. He's, was formerly our dare officer at, for many years, had a good friendship, and he was, he actually paid me a personal visit to my office after he talked to the chief. And we don't waste any time and try to create as little drama as possible down at the department, so we, on Friday, we promoted Sergeant, or Officer Andy Hale to Sergeant, and we had a swearing-in ceremony on Friday, at which time the command staff was playing musical chairs with me, and I noticed that the former detective was wearing a uniform and a former operations officer was wearing a suit. And so that was the way that they were announcing that they had changed positions down at the department. This is a prudent thing to do, I think Mr. Egan will agree to that, that it's good for a command staff to rotate so that each captain knows the jobs of the other captains. And so now we have the same captains, but they have different assignments. So that's, that's forward-thinking by Chief Lowry, and it was just kind of amusing the way they let me know about it. Also, I wanted to share with you a good news from Chief Lowry. He's happy to announce that crime in the city of Florissant has decreased in 2013. Index crime statistics comparing 12 to 13 in Florissant show an overall reduction of 11 percent. And this is the fifth straight year that the city of Florissant has seen a decrease in crime. Reported crimes are broken down into two categories, Part 1 and 2. Part 1 crimes are real serious, and Part 2 crimes are serious, but not quite as, as, you know, as serious. Chief Lowry attributes the drop in crime to the officers that diligently patrol the streets of Florissant, and the investigators identifying and getting charges on repeat offenders. And he also said the most important factor in the decrease was the strong participation with the police department from the citizens of Florissant, in our Neighborhood Watch program, and all the, on those citizens who call in to report suspicious activity. That's what really helps our police department stay on top of things. So keep those calls coming in when you see something suspicious in the, in your neighborhood. Some good news to report, a blog site known as Movoto, it's a real estate blog, named Florissant the best small city for retirees in America. And it went on, it's a fairly lengthy report that came through KSDK, and it's reported, they compared 140 cities with populations of 50,000 to 60,000. And many cities are not surprisingly, the top, three of the top 10 are in Florida, and another two in Texas, and one in California. Besides Florissant, other cities in the top 10 are located in Iowa, Ohio, and Tennessee. So, but we're the number one in this particular survey, and they cite many of the activities that we have, such as the that we have, such as the senior activities that we have through Peggy Hogan and our senior department, golf leagues, and other recreational leagues and recreational opportunities in the city of Florissant. So, we're very proud of this recognition. I also like to share with you that yesterday, there was a fundraiser for a very important landmark here in Florissant. It was a fundraiser for the St. Ferdinand Shrine, hosted by Chemo's, and we're very grateful to Chemo's, a large community of Florissant citizens and friends of Florissant from outside our community. We're on hand, along with Archbishop Carlson, and all the pastors in Florissant. And particularly, I'd like to thank Father Keller, who's the chairman of the Old St. Ferdinand Shrine Committee, and all the citizens that serve on that committee, including Mayor Emeritus Lowry. We have many, we have other former office holders on that committee as well. And a project that they're working on currently is to preserve artifacts that are two centuries old or nearing two centuries old, and some of those artifacts were touched by St. Philippi de Shane, one of 11 North American saints. And the archdiocese has put a new life, breathed new life into the Old St. Ferdinand Shrine, and we're so happy that they have done so, because Florissant has always known the value of the shrine, and now, we're so glad that the archdiocese is putting an effort into it. And I'm happy also to report that Archbishop Carlson pledged to match $30,000 for money donated by this coming Wednesday to Old St. Ferdinand Shrine. You have until Wednesday to get your donation in, and the Archbishop will find a way to match that, up to $30,000. And this is to pay for the climate-controlled cases that are needed at the shrine to house these old artifacts, to protect them from old and other ravages of age, mold, and other ravages of age. So, these, like I said, these are very important artifacts that are in climate-controlled storage now, and we want them to be returned to the shrine where they belong, but we can't return them there until we have these climate-controlled cases. It's been determined that it's too cost prohibitive to try to climate-control the entire shrine property, so we're going to have cases... This is a... This is a method that's been used by other locations, veneration, to preserve your artifacts. As Mr. Hernandez said, the Barnes &amp; Noble is closing. This is a small setback for the city of Florissant. We can't deny that. I'd like to thank everyone who's expressed their concern and affection for the Barnes &amp; Noble store, and I share your concern. Matter of fact, I purchased a book today, the biography of Teddy Roosevelt, The Bully Pulpit. Unfortunately, there's no agreement between Mark Barnes &amp; Noble and Cross Keys Shopping Center going forward. According to a January 23 Post-Dispatch story, Barnes &amp; Noble announced last year that they'll be closing 15 to 20 stores nationwide. And it should be noted that paper-bound book industry worldwide is in decline and has experienced similar challenges as the newspaper industry and the movie rental industry. Competition from Amazon and other online book marketers, including Barnes &amp; Noble, along with the increased use of electronic devices such as Kindle Fire to download books also sold at the Barnes &amp; Noble, has caused a decline in the manufacturing and sale of paper-bound books all over the world. As we know, competitor Borders is now out of business. However, I have tried very hard to avert the closing, and to that end, I met with the regional manager at the store in person, and then talked to Barnes &amp; Noble Corporate several times. I talked to the top management team leadership of the property management company, Sandstone Group, for the Cross Keys Shopping Center several times also, including family members from the Sandstone family who have developed relationships with over the years. The Sandstone family member that I talked to cannot share details of lease negotiations with me, because that would be tortuous interference. But he said that the two sides were very far apart. He did tell me that they're very close to an agreement with a tenant to occupy the space at Deals used... That used to be at Cross Keys, and that if a deal could not be made with Barnes &amp; Noble, that a new tenant for the prestigious End Cap would not be hard to find. I have expressed the fact that Florissant residents have a high level of affection for Barnes &amp; Noble and would very much like to see it remain open. I've encouraged both parties to seek mutually agreeable terms that would result in the continuation of the bookstore in Florissant, and have offered to do whatever the city of Florissant can do to achieve that end. This is an exception to the rule, as we have been and continue to experience aggressive investment in our commercial corridors, as evidenced by other retailers such as Here Today and the five stores and two restaurants in a renovated former Value City footprint, choosing to locate in Florissant. I again talked to a representative of the Sandstone Group today, and although I have nothing positive to report regarding Barnes &amp; Noble, I did receive the great news that an agreement is likely to be made public this week about a new tenant locating in the former Deals space. The short period of time that Deals space was vacant bodes well for the economic health of shops across Keys. Another indication of our economic strength is that the city of Florissant is now in a confident position to issue a request for proposals to redevelop the Plaza Madrid Shopping Center. After over a year of discussions with various potential investors and developers, we've identified a bona fide project team with an attractive proposal. We still have to send out invitations to give other teams an opportunity to submit their alternatives also. But we are very, very encouraged by this development and hope to have some good news report on Plaza Madrid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is February 10. Mr. Hernandez moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.